I call to order the Gladstone City Council meeting for September 8th, 2020 at 6:30 PM. Good evening, everybody. I hope the smoke isn't driving you as crazy as it is me, so please excuse my coughing. I'm trying to take cough drops to stop that. The smoke's not good. Per the Governor's Executive Order 20-16 regarding compliance with Oregon's public meeting laws, the city of Gladstone is abiding by social distancing requirements during the coronavirus pandemic. The city council meeting will be conducted virtually using the Zoom platform. The Zoom access instructions can be found on the meeting agenda. Members of the city council, staff, and public all have access to this calls. Public comment requests were accepted prior to noon today and were to include your topic and phone number. Tonight, our consent agenda includes approval of the August 11th, 2020 meeting minutes, approval of the July bank balances, budget report for period ending July 31st, 2020, approval of the July check register, legal costs on projects, department head monthly reports for August 2020, approval for public works to purchase a backhoe per the city's vehicle equipment replacement policy, and approval of Resolution 1183 declaring a state of public health emergency COVID-19 pandemic to extend through December 31st, 2020 unless superseded sooner. Our regular meeting agenda includes public hearing for the sale of surplus property on Clackamas River Drive, collective bargaining agreement between the professional firefighters of Clackamas County, IAFF Local 1159, and the city of Gladstone, proposal on use of Coronavirus Aid Relief and Economic Security Act funds, also referred to as CARE funds, proposed bylaws of Clackamas County Library Advisory Board, and letter to the Federal Highway Administration, also referred to as FHA, and the Oregon Department of Transportation, also referred to as ODOT, on the I-205 tolling project environmental assessment. Business carried forward will be an update from our city administrator on diversity, equity, inclusion, and bias endeavors. Tammy, could you please call the roll?
Counselor Ripley?
Yes.
Counselor Neese?
Yes.
Counselor Tracy?
Here.
Counselor Reisner?
Here.
Counselor Todd?
Here.
Counselor Mercero?
Yes.
Mayor Stimple?
Here. Thank you. Are there any agenda additions or corrections?
I would like to, but I'd like to pull item 12, the proposed bylaws of Clackamas County Library Advisory Board. There's been additional information that's come in that I'll need to review before bringing this forward. So I'd like to pull that item at this time.
Okay, thank you. Any questions about that, counsel? Nope. Nope. All right, thank you. Um, so the next item is our consent agenda. I would like to pull item number three if we could, which is the budget report for period ending July 31st, 2020. So anybody else have something to pull or would like to make a motion to approve the remainder?
Was that a motion?
Would someone like to make a motion?
Counselor Ripley will make a motion to approve the remainder of the consent agenda.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Motion was made by Counselor Ripley and seconded by Counselor Reisner to approve all but item number three. Any further discussion?
Yeah, I have the question there. So I understand you're talking about the budget report for this period ending?
Yes.
Is there an issue that a particular, in particular that you want to review or?
Just a couple clarifications is all. I just had a couple line items that I just had just a clarification on.
We would bring it back for review after clarifying?
Yes.
Okay.
So we'll vote on the rest of them and then we'll just discuss that one briefly and then we can vote on number three by itself. Yep. All right. Tammy, could you do a roll call vote, please?
Counselor Ripley?
Yes.
Counselor Neese?
Yes.
Counselor Tracy?
Yes.
Counselor Reisner?
Yes.
Counselor Todd?
Yes.
Counselor Mercero?
Yes.
Mayor Stimple?
Yes, thank you very much. So on item number three, the only questions that I had on page 3-3 of the budget report, I started seeing some line items that were over 100% of their use so far and we're only, what, two months into the budget? And so I was kind of concerned with that. Under materials and services, contractual and professional services, we're already at 120, almost 125%. And then fire and liability insurance, we were at 173%. The next page, computer technology services, we were at 128.99. Building repair, 100. So there was just a couple that were over 100% and I know it has probably some, everything to do with the budget year and I just wanted clarification on that.
Thank you, Mayor. From what I can assume from that is sometimes you pay the full year in advance and it's not proportioned out monthly. So it's not that we're going to continue to run that line item over. It's just that we have already paid the full amount in that year. But I also want to check, I think our finance manager is going to be on this call. Is Kathy on the call?
I do not know that she's on the call.
Okay. That's the best explanation that I can provide. Otherwise, I'll need to run your questions by her so that she can provide you an answer.
Okay, I knew it had something to do with the allocations. It just, one, a couple of the numbers were pretty heavy. One was 227% and I thought that was pretty crazy. So, okay, I'm good with it. Would someone like to make a motion to approve item number three then?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Mayor, there was a motion on the table to, did we already vote on, accept all the rest of them?
We haven't voted on number three yet. That's what we're going to vote on now.
Okay.
So I have a motion by Counselor Tracy, but I need a second.
I'll second.
Okay, motion was made by Counselor Tracy, seconded by Counselor Mercero. Any further discussion on that line item? All right, Tammy, could you do a roll call vote, please?
Counselor Ripley?
Yes.
Counselor Neese?
Yeah.
Counselor Tracy?
Yes.
Counselor Reisner?
Yes.
Counselor Todd?
Yes.
Counselor Mercero?
Yes.
Mayor Stimple?
Yes, thank you very much. It doesn't look like we have any correspondence unless something else has come in.
I have no correspondence, thank you.
All right, so a couple of things before we start, like I usually do. First, for those folks that would like to speak, the deadline to accept comments was noon today. And as a reminder, we allow three minutes for public comment unless there are special circumstances and additional time has been approved beforehand by staff. One citizen has questioned the fact that I have business from the audience at the end of the meeting, stating that it's inconvenient for those that wish to speak. And my response is that it, this is something that more and more of the cities are going towards because this is our business meeting. And as you can see by our agenda, we do have a lot of business that we need to discuss. And I'm more than happy to have people speak on the individual agenda items. But after we're done with our business, then we'll have business from the audience and it's my way to hopefully get people engaged so that they can follow the issues that we debate and discuss and vote on every day. Second, as I do before every meeting, I would like to say a few words regarding the city council. The most important limitation we have sitting here is that we represent the citizens of Gladstone, not our own personal agendas and beliefs. There have been many times when a decision being made doesn't align with what we would like personally, but have made a decision based on what is best for the city as a whole. That doesn't mean our personal beliefs have changed, just that the city's needs were more important. As we discuss and consider matters, there are laws and rules we have to use as the basis of our decisions. These start at the federal and state level, then they filter down to our city's comprehensive plan, city charter, codes, and ordinances. We do not have the luxury of randomly making decisions, but instead have to be consistent and take a path that is defensible. We appreciate you taking the time to call in and participate in this process. I believe we will have all of your phones muted until it is your time to speak and if that does not work, please mute your phones. My goal is to keep this meeting respectful and engaging and I hope all of you can help us do that. So the first item is number nine, which is public hearing for the sale of surplus property on Clackamas River Drive. Staff?
Thank you, Mayor. We're actually excited to bring this item to you tonight and what you're considering is authorizing myself to go ahead and sign the appropriate closing documents to sell this city surplus property. It does not have an address associated with it, so we're using the tax ID number 00545663 on Clackamas River Drive. It's approximately 6.9 acres sloped, vacated, heavily treed property. And it has gone through quite the process to get to this stage tonight. Back in December of 2017, the city council formally approved a resolution declaring the property a surplus. And then in May of 2018, the citizens approved Measure 3531, a city of Gladstone charter authorization to sell the surplus real property specifically at this location. Kasra has been our agent on marketing this piece of property and it's been on the market since January of 2018. We had an original asking price of $165,000. There's been many requests for information as well as potential buyers, but it is a unique piece of property that might be kind of difficult to do a lot of things on it. On June 23rd of 2020, the city did receive a cash offer on the piece of property from Michael Dunlap in the amount of $145,000. He had until August 15th to complete the feasibility study. He wants to build a cabin on site. We just completed the feasibility stage and the next part of the process is for the city council to hold a public hearing and making sure you open it up for anybody to speak in favor or against or neutral on this property. Before you open up the public hearing, Kasra is on this meeting tonight and I will hand it over to him to provide you any other information.
All right, thank you. Thank you for being here, Kasra. Do you have anything to add to the staff report?
Well, this has been a difficult property to sell. It is, does not have any utilities, so it will require septic and a well. Everything has to be brought in, including access road. It is heavily sloped. It does have some ancient slide zones on it, so it's not totally buildable, only sections of it is buildable. So it's not for everyone and that's why it's taken so long to sell this. We have probably shipped out more than 50 packets of information to potential buyers over the past two years and lots and lots of people have walked this property, but it's just difficult. This current buyer knows what they're doing. They have done extensive due diligence through the city, through the county, through the state, and they're willing to move forward with it. And I think it's time to let it go.
All right, does counsel have any questions?
I did want to disclose that we had one question from the buyer that came up today regarding a pipe on the property and we're trying to clarify if it's the county's responsibility to maintain that stormwater. We don't think that this will hold up the sale of the property. Our public works directors offered to go on site with the buyer and we will get that clarification. We just weren't able to do it before tonight's meeting.
Okay, Counselor Mercero?
I've got one question regarding the plans with the money that is above the, that we receive above the escrow amounts and so on, the $134,960. What's the plan for that in the, in the budget next year?
Well, our recommendation is that we reserve that for parks in the public works department budget. Specifically, we are currently looking for resources for our parks. That is a strategic goal of the city council. So we would recommend that that's where the funds be held.
Okay, is that sound appropriate to all the rest of counselors?
Counselor Ripley, I'm fine with that.
Counselor Reisner? So I was gonna say, I think questions like that should wait till after the public hearing is closed, when we can have a discussion about maybe that topic and if we're going to sell it at all.
Counselor Todd? You're muted.
Muted. Sorry about that. There was a lot going on with some smoke coming into the house, so I was very unprepared to answer anything, but I have no questions right now. Thank you.
Okay, and then keep going. Counselor Tracy?
I see the options that are available to us, but I agree with Counselor Reisner. If we just go through the public hearing, then we could have the discussion after. Is that what you were saying, Counselor Reisner?
That's correct. We might, might be have somebody bring up some ideas during that that we hadn't thought of.
Okay, Counselor Neese? I don't see you on here. Are you on there?
I believe she's on her iPhone.
Okay, Counselor Neese? All right. Well, then we'll go ahead and open it up for public comment. Is there anybody that would like to make comment on this item number? Since most of you don't have video up, I'm not going to be able to tell unless you turn your video on and raise your hand. Okay, I don't see anything. Would someone make a motion to close the public hearing then, please?
I move that we close the public hearing.
I'll second. Motion was made by Counselor Reisner and seconded by Counselor Todd. Any further discussion? Tammy, could you do a roll call vote, please?
Counselor Ripley?
Yes.
Counselor Tracy? Counselor Reisner?
Yes.
Counselor Todd?
Yes.
Counselor Mercero? Mayor Stimple?
Yes. All right, so do we have any discussion? Counselor Reisner?
Yeah. Being that, you know, it was a surprise back about four years ago, three, four years ago, that the city owned this property in the first place and it is a ways, I mean, granted, walking distance from the city on the south side of the river. And we do own, or I shouldn't say we own, we did own property south side of the river, but there is a little bit acre that's still within the city limits. I think selling it is the proper thing to do and putting the proceeds into the park budget would also be appropriate.
Any, any other counselor have a comment?
I concur with Counselor Reisner.
Okay. Now, we can take a vote, but in order for us to do a second reading tonight, we need unanimous, which means that Counselor Neese will have to be able to vote also. Is she on?
It looks like she's trying to come back on now.
Oh, there she is. All right. Counselor Neese, do you have any questions or comments on this one?
No.
Okay. Would someone like to make a motion then?
I would. So I move that we authorize the city administrator to sign the appropriate closing documents to sell city surplus property, tax ID number 00545683 on Clackamas River Drive, Oregon City, Oregon 97027, to Michael Dunlap in the amount of $145,000.
Do I have a second?
Second. Actually, call, whatever. So are we also, the option of proceeds going to the, of the sale going to the parks there, Counselor Reisner, just so that we get the whole option in there?
Sure. I'll amend that to continue that the proceeds of the sale minus brokerage fees and title and escrow of $10,040, which would be, proceeds would be $134,960 are reserved for parks in the public works department budget. With the allocation of the funds will be identified through the next biannual budget process coming up before the end of this fiscal year.
All right, so do I have a second?
I have a second.
A motion was made by Counselor Reisner and seconded by Counselor Mercero and I think Counselor Neese. Any further discussion? Tammy, could you take a roll call vote, please?
Counselor Ripley?
Yes.
Counselor Neese?
Yes.
Counselor Tracy?
Yes.
Counselor Reisner?
Yes.
Counselor Todd?
Yes.
Counselor Mercero?
Yes.
Mayor Stimple?
Yes. And since it was unanimous, we'll go ahead and do the second reading if that's all right with everybody. Again, for the sale of surplus property on Clackamas River Drive. Any additional comments from staff?
No, I have nothing further. Thank you.
All right. Would someone like to make a motion then, please?
Whoa. Yes. Okay, so I again, for the second reading, move that we authorize the city administrator to sign the appropriate closing documents to sell city surplus property, tax ID number 00545663, Clackamas River Drive, Oregon City, Oregon 97027, to Michael Dunlap in the amount of $145,000, that the proceeds of the sale minus brokerage fees and title and escrow of $10,040, with the proceeds of $134,960 being reserved for parks in the public works department budget. Allocation of the funds will be identified through the next biannual budget process.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
I'll second it. Counselor Neese?
Motion was made by Counselor Reisner and seconded by Counselor Neese. Any further discussion? Tammy, could you do a roll call vote, please?
Counselor Ripley?
Yes.
Counselor Neese?
Yes.
Counselor Tracy?
Yes.
Counselor Reisner?
Yes.
Counselor Todd?
Yes.
Counselor Mercero?
Yes.
Mayor Stimple?
Yes. Good, great, thank you. Let's sell the property. Next is item number 10, which is collective bargaining agreement between the professional firefighters of Clackamas County, IAFF Local 1159, and the city of Gladstone. I have a conflict of interest on this one since my husband works for the fire department, so I'm going to recuse myself from officiating on this one item and I'm going to turn it over to counsel president Matt Tracy.
Okay. Thank you, Mayor. Staff?
Jackie, would you like me to take the staff report? You're on mute.
Go ahead, Ashley. That's fine. Thank you.
Hi, Ashley Driscoll to the attorney's office. I was part of the negotiation team on behalf of the city, so I will take you to the staff report. So as the council recalls, this will be the initial collective bargaining agreement between the city of Gladstone and your four professional firefighter captains. The captains unionized in late 2019, actually more like August in 2019, but for a substantial period of time, they did not demand bargain. So once they did demand to bargain, it was deep into the coronavirus epidemic, so we were delayed at some additional time. Over the city's team, which consisted of me, Chief Huffman, and Nancy McDonald, we met with the union's team six times over the course of the summer and negotiated a complete contract, which I have to tell you is a pretty significant feat. The contract includes 33 articles that range from anything from wages to hours to health insurance to deferred compensation. So only six times for an initial contract is a good record. So how the city's team approached this is that we stayed as close to the status quo or how the city currently conducts itself as closely as possible. When the union would suggest changes to the status quo, we would evaluate them amongst ourselves. We would talk with the union and if we did make any changes or we did deviate from the status quo, we made sure that we had a good reason for doing it. So from an economic perspective, the CBA language that we have in front of you significantly tracks what the city has currently been doing. The significant impacts are a 3% wage increase effective on ratification that all other employees received and then some increased holiday time for employees who are on a 56-hour shift. That change was made because we discovered that other similarly situated fire agencies also did increased holiday and vacation times to the city without a sink. The city was also at a sink with other city employees who are offered holiday time as well as vacation time when you're on a 24-hour schedule. So the other issue is that this is a three-year contract. However, we only negotiated wages and insurance for this fiscal year. The idea, especially when we are starting this, was that in February 2021, we all hope and continue to hope that we are going to have a better idea of the ongoing financial picture and that we'll be in a better position to negotiate wages and insurance at that time. So both parties agreed that we would come back to the table and look at those two issues in February. The rest of the contract, so all the other 31 articles are going to remain intact for at least the next three years and for all likelihood beyond that, unless there's a significant reason to change them. So I have included the entire contract for your consideration. The union members voted unanimously to approve the collective bargaining agreement last week. So the last step is that if the city is happy with this collective bargaining agreement, the council can vote to ratify it and it will go into effect. So I, I'm available for questions. I believe I'm the only one here from the, from the team, so I hope I can answer all your questions.
Thank you, Ashley. Does counsel have questions for Ashley or Jackie?
Mercero has none.
Okay, I'm not seeing any questions or hearing any questions. I did have one. So you, Ashley, you said that you're only opening up the one wages article, correct? After one year, is that correct?
Wages and insurance are typically considered together.
Do you have a date set for that or are you just kind of going off of the timeline of, you know, basically when we get to closer to ops normal?
Yeah, we said February 2021.
Maybe I missed that.
Was the time that we would start negotiating that and again, hopefully go into effect in June of that year.
Okay. Any other questions from counsel? Okay, Jackie, do you have anything you want to add?
I just want to add that your fire chief is on a fire call right now. Otherwise, he would have been here to participate. It was a very healthy process that, that he was very supportive of as well.
Okay, I think that what you're asking for us is ratification from the council signing on to the CBA. Is that correct?
That is.
All right, do I hear?
Counselor Tracy?
Yes.
We had three people that wanted to make a public comment on the agenda item.
Yeah. Thank you. You want to call them, please?
The first one, they will be limited to three minutes and the first one is Mark Kilman Burnham.
Great, thank you. Mark? You're muted. You're muted, sir.
How about now?
You got it.
Excellent. My name is Mark Kilman Burnham. I am the Governmental Affairs Director for American Medical Response and Global Medical Response and I just really wanted to- American Medical Response and Global Medical Response, and I just really wanted to say that I'm also a Gladstone resident and our local fire department, even though it's a volunteer, is a tremendous asset to this community and has been a great partner with AMR as we've tried to prevent people from dying down at High Rocks and all the education that we do together down there. And I think this is something that's warranted, that, you know, all the other professional firefighters in the area have CBAs, work together, work real well at their communities. And I just think that the size of this department and the amount that they give back to this community is amazing. The employees and the captains and the chief and Mr. Funk, all of them do a fantastic job. And, you know, we know this just by what happened last night and what's going on right now. I mean, we have them out on the streets right now. I am trying to get from my office, and the reason why I was a little bit late for this call is the big fire over here off of, by Strawberry Lane. And, you know, sometimes people forget how stressful a job this can be and really looking into the incentive pay, increased holiday time, things like that is very important because firefighters and EMS professionals have a very stressful time and their well-being is something that needs to be looked after. And I'm proud of our community that has stepped up and is working with them to make this happen. So I just wanted to say, from a national perspective, we may be a little town, but we're mighty and we have a great fire department, and I just want to thank everyone who serves here.
All right, thank you for your comments. Tammy, could you call the next commenter, please?
Next is Sharon Alexander.
Thank you, Sharon.
Hi. Hi, my name is Sharon Alexander. I'm a longtime resident of Gladstone, and I know you're voting tonight on whether to approve the fire department contract, and I want to tell you that you should. Our fire department is such an important part of our community, and they shouldn't be the only class of employees not covered by a union contract. I want to remind you that in the past two cycles of the fire levy, over 80% of the citizens of Gladstone supported our department. You were elected to support our community, and we want our firefighters. They work so hard for our community, both as firefighters and in other ways they support the toy and joy derived, the community events and the general community efforts. We need to step up and show them that they are a valued part of our town. Also, I know some other people in the council have family connections to the fire department, and for that reason I think they should excuse themselves from voting. Thank you.
Last is Bill Osborne.
Thank you, Tammy. Bill?
Yeah, Bill Osborne here. I just want to say I want to thank our firefighters and all the work they do. I think in the last 24 hours, we certainly have all gained more appreciation for them and all of our first responders. You know, usually when I'm here, I'm talking about saving money and things along those lines, but the community, of course, has spoke when we put this to a levy numerous times, and they support the firefighters. And I have faith you guys will support this as well, so most of what I was going to say has already been said by the other speakers, so I won't waste a bunch of time. I will just repeat that. I don't know if there's a conflict of interest or a perceived conflict of interest for people who have either worked on the fire department or have family that works or worked out on it. So I would just ask that you check with the city attorney, make sure that everything's done on the up and up, and that's all. Thank you.
Thanks, Bill. Jackie, at this time, we don't have anybody who'd be voting on this presently that would be in a conflict of interest. Is that correct?
That's correct. The mayor has already declared her conflict of interest. That is the only person on the current city council that is related to an employee or that would financially benefit from this bargaining agreement.
So I'm concerned when I hear the word perceived, a conflict of interest, because we're voting on something that's very important this evening, and I'd hate for that vote to be nullified because of perceived conflicts of interest. So I agree, I don't think there is one here, but Ashley, do you have anything to add to this? Is there another? I mean, we've been pretty careful about this, have we not?
I'm not familiar with anybody else in the council that has any sort of conflict, except for the mayor who has recused herself and is not part of this.
With the record, it would be there, it would be upon them to recuse themselves or to remove themselves from the vote. Is that correct?
Right, they would need to declare their conflict and then either, yeah.
Ashley, can I speak? Lyndon Neese? Yes. My son is no longer involved with the Gladstone Volunteer Fire Department, so if that was the comment and it was directed, there is no conflict there.
I'm just trying to make sure we're going to have a valid vote here, so that's blown out.
Me too.
Yeah, and also that my son was on the fire department and hasn't been for over three years, so I don't foresee a conflict regarding me.
Council Ripley?
Yeah, I will recuse myself because I know that knowledge really scares people. The comments about the levies, those levies were from larger fire departments, which we no longer have. It's completely different now. So I will recuse myself because I know the comments are all directed at me. So I'm out.
So Council Ripley, are you declaring an actual conflict of interest?
I'll declare a conflict of interest because of the way that I left the fire department because I didn't agree with the management and the changes. So I will, I will declare a conflict of interest because, I'm trying to think of what the word could be. You might have to think of a word for me.
Yeah, so I mean, just as a, just as a primer on conflicts of interest. So there are two types of conflicts of interest. There are actual and there are perceived conflicts of interest. So an actual conflict of interest means if you're voting on something, it will have an impact on you or a relative for which you're associated, or I'm sorry, a relative or business for which you're associated in an economic capacity. So for instance, Mayor Stempel is married to one of the four captains. By voting on this, you know, she would gain financially because it is, because the wage increases would impact her. You know, other types of conflicts of interest, which I would call more colloquial conflicts of interest, are not the legal standard for a conflict. So a perceived conflict of interest is if voting for, voting on this item could potentially have an impact on you, a relative, or a business for which you're associated with financially. In that case, you would declare the conflict, and if you could still participate without having any bias, you could go ahead with your vote. Only with an actual conflict of interest are you legally prohibited from voting.
Okay, then I'll vote. I'll take back my comment. Or my...
Your recusal.
Your recusal.
My recusal. I was watching a car drive after. So I'll take your recusal back and I'll go back in.
Okay. Thank you, Ashley, for helping clear that up. Appreciate it. So do I hear a motion on the table?
Sure. I move the approval of International Association of Firefighters, IAFF Local 1159 and City of Gladstone Collective Bargaining Agreement effective upon ratification 2020 to 2023.
Council, I have two seconds.
Great, so motion on the table, like Neil Reiser, Council Reiser, approval in International Association of Firefighters, IAFF Local 1159 and City of Gladstone Collective Bargaining Agreement effective upon ratification 2020 to 2023, seconded by Council Mercero. Tammy, could you take a roll call vote, please?
Council Ripley?
No.
Council Neese?
Yes.
Council Tracy?
Yes.
Council Reisner?
Yes.
Council Todd?
Yes.
And Council Mercero?
Yes.
What is that, 5-1, correct?
Correct.
Motion carries? And so we're going to go ahead and close this out and hand back off to Mayor Stempel. Jackie, is there any other business on this topic that we need to take care of prior to the mayor taking over the gavel?
Nope, thank you very much.
All right.
Thank you, Ashley.
Thanks. Have a good evening.
All right, thank you, Council Tracy. Next is item number 11, which is proposal on use of the Coronavirus Aid Relief and Economic Security Act funds, which is also referred to as the CARE funds. Staff?
Thank you, Mayor Stempel. So staff is trying to find the silver linings in this pandemic, and what we would like the city council to consider is implementing the Gladstone COVID Assistance Program. So basically what that is, is the federal government allocated $1.6 billion to the state of Oregon for coronavirus relief fund. Then the governor committed $400 million for cities, counties, and special districts that did not receive funds directly from the federal government, like Washington County, Multnomah County, and the city of Portland. Based on the state's formula, Gladstone is eligible to be reimbursed $383,314. These funds can be used to reimburse cities for expenses related to the pandemic, and the U.S. Treasury issued two documents to determine what costs are eligible for reimbursements. The funds may not be used for revenue replacement. That means we can't make up for city revenue sources that have declined since the pandemic. Allowed uses include medical expenses, public health expenses, payroll, and compliance expenses as defined in the Treasury Guidance Document. What we would like to do is to be considered the pass-through as the local government, and we'd like to create the GCAP, the Gladstone COVID Assistance Program, and allocate the funds to St. Vincent de Paul's to actually administer to qualified residents within Gladstone. So for instance, we get phone calls daily from people that are looking for COVID relief, whether it's for their rental assistance, for food, for utility billing. Because St. Vincent de Paul is an established nonprofit that currently administers these types of programs for the city of Milwaukee and Lake Oswego, they have the administrative staff on hand to process these requests quicker than Gladstone, who does not have a program in place. So what we would like to do is to cede the program with up to $100,000 in increments of $10,000 and then replenish the grants as they're awarded, and it would be only for qualified Gladstone residents for utility assistance, rent assistance, and food. In your council packet, we also provided you a copy of what the criteria would be for that, and the donated funds would be submitted to St. Vincent de Paul starting September 15th if the council approves it. They would also send the payment directly to the businesses on behalf of the applicant as long as the program remains within its funding limits, and we would also get a detailed report from St. Vincent de Paul on who they are allocating those funds through. We think that this is really an excellent way to try to take advantage of the money that the federal government has allocated for this. The city of Gladstone has also been directly reimbursed for our overtime costs from our first responders that we have to date and also for any of our COVID leads that we've had for our employees. So as you can see, under the fiscal impact, we still have a balance of about $321,000 that we could ask the federal government for reimbursement. We don't believe we're going to be able to spend all of that, but we would like to start out with $100,000. And again, we would only do it in $10,000 increments to St. Vincent de Paul, and they have to have all of these funds spent by the end of December. So with that, does the city council have any questions?
I'm just going to kind of go through, so I got everybody covered. Council Mercero?
No questions.
Council Reisner?
None. Thank you, well done.
Council Tracy?
Curious. Businesses or individuals are both, are both able to apply to this program?
Both are able to apply for this through the set criteria that St. Vincent has, and we believe we maxed it at about $1,000 per customer, depending on what kind of need they would, they would ask for.
And they're going to stick with the 5% admin cost, correct?
That's correct.
Okay, no further questions, thank you.
Council Todd?
That was the $1,000. I mean, could they apply for that multiple times if there was different needs or would it only just be the one time?
It would be the one time for the $1,000.
Okay, thank you.
Council Neese?
No, I'm okay.
Council Ripley? Council Ripley?
No questions.
All right, well then, would someone like to make a motion?
I'll make a motion. I make a motion to authorize the city administrator to implement the COVID Assistance Program, GCAP, and enter into an agreement with St. Vincent's Paul's to administer COVID relief for Gladstone residents.
I'll second it.
Motion was made by Council Mercero and seconded by Council Neese. Do we have any further discussion? I just want to say thank you. This is wonderful. It is so desperately needed. I'm very excited about this program. Tammy, could you do a roll call vote, please?
I have one more question.
Oh, yes, Council Tracy?
Administrator Betts, we're talking about this in the first $100,000 increment. I see the word reimbursement, then we're going to continue to monitor this account and make sure that we don't get too far ahead of ourselves or get out over our skis on dispersment, correct?
That's, that's correct, yes.
Okay, and there's a, there's a program in place for us to do that because, I mean, sometimes the feds don't necessarily get money to folks as fast as they should, so I'm asking.
Yes, yes, you are correct. And the other thing I'd like to add is that we did have the city attorney review the Treasury guidelines to make sure that this program qualifies, and it does.
Okay, appreciate it. Thank you. No further questions. Thanks, you, Mayor.
All right, Tammy, could you do a roll call vote, please?
Council Ripley?
Yeah.
Council Neese?
Yes.
Council Tracy?
Yes.
Council Reisner?
Yes.
Council Todd?
Yes.
Council Mercero? Mayor Stempel?
Yes, thank you. Item number 12, proposed bylaws of Clackamas County Library Advisory Board, has been pulled. So we're moving on to item number 13, letter to Federal Highway Administration, the FHA, and Oregon Department of Transportation, known as ODOT, on the I-205 tolling project environmental assessment. Staff?
Thank you, Mayor Stempel. In your packet tonight is a draft letter that I authored, and as you can see from the tone of the letter, I basically put that we didn't want any of the alternatives and instead would support the no build. I know that's a bold statement to make, but I figured that this is a draft and that the city council wants to change the wording in the letter that we can, but I simply tried to represent the concerns and interests that the city council and our residents have expressed to this point. As you know, that this 205 tolling process is going to be lengthy, and I think that we do need to issue a letter on behalf of the elected officials.
Any questions from council? Council Mercero?
No questions.
Council Reisner?
No, well said, well written. Definitely on board.
Council Tracy?
Yeah, quick question. I don't remember, Administrator Betts, do you, do you remember when they were going to put the NEPA process in place so that they actually had some information coming back from their NEPA work? I know they've done it in phases, but I just haven't tracked this as closely as I should, probably.
The public comment period went out August 3rd, I believe, for the thirty day.
September 13th is the last day for the NEPA Alternatives Comment Period. September 13th is the last day for the NEPA alternatives comment period, so this is the.
That's just on the comments. So I'm asking about like the work that they've done to actually do the NEPA work, which is, I mean, it's it's a little broader than that. And I remember when they were talking to us, what was it, a couple, three weeks ago? I've lost track of time. It seemed like they hadn't done a lot of the groundwork. So I think we're all concerned about the equity issues here, not to mention just on the physical impact it would put on this particular city, right? So I just was curious if anything else had come in or any other findings on on their work for, you know, their NEPA work on the ground.
No, nothing else has come in. I also followed up to find out if there's going to be another policy discussion. Councilor Ripley and Councilor Reisner is the alternate, and I believe that that work is done. They had not scheduled one. So I think now that Gladstone has requested to be a stakeholder, it behooves us to stay on top of this process. It will be a lengthy NEPA process, but I have not received any new information since they presented at the city.
Yeah, it's kind of surprising. They're asking for support before they're doing the work. So I just wanted to make sure I was following that timeline. All right.
Can I put one little piece in there?
Yes.
Okay. I believe one of the holdups right now is because ODOT sent out a questionnaire, and they're waiting to get the results back of the questionnaire before we schedule our next meeting. So as soon as they get that back, then we'll start having more meetings.
Okay, thank you. Councilor Todd?
No, no questions right now.
Councilor Neese?
No, I'm okay.
Councilor Ripley, do you want to add anything else?
No.
Well, we do definitely need to stay on top of this, and I can tell you that when ODOT came to the C4 group, they were not welcomed. They their feet were to the fire, that's for sure. So there's not a whole lot of support in Clackamas County that I can see for this, unless there's some major change to the language where the funds would stay in our I-205 corridor. Right now, it's written where the funds can be used anywhere, which is really unfortunate. But all in all, I mean, it is it's going to impact our county more than anybody else. And I think Gladstone in particular, with what, 57, 51% of our people leaving town to go to work? This this is going to be huge when we have such a high population of low to severely low income. So we definitely need to keep on top of this.
Mayor, I have a quick question. Does OTC supersede, can they supersede the communities in pushing back? Or do they make the final decision?
I think they make the final decision in C4 at a meeting, the one prior to our last city council meeting, asked that citizens write letters to OTC directly instead of just one letter signed by a bunch of people that more individual letters will have more impact. So I highly recommend that people send a letter to OTC on how they do not believe this is a smart way to move forward.
Okay, thank you for the information.
Also, you know, when the ODOT came before us last month, had several questions that they were going to respond with some answers, and they haven't done that as of yet.
Okay. Anything else from council? Would somebody like to make a motion to sign on to this letter?
I move that the city council submit a the attached comment letter to the Federal Highway Administration and the Oregon Department of Transportation on the I-205 tolling environment assessment.
I'll second.
Motion was made by Councilor Reisner, seconded by Councilor Tracy. Any further discussion? I don't see anything. Tammy, could you do a roll call vote, please?
Councilor Ripley?
Yes.
Councilor Neese?
Yes.
Councilor Tracy?
Yes.
Councilor Reisner?
Yes.
Councilor Todd?
Yes.
Councilor Mercero?
Yes.
Mayor Stimple?
Yes. Thank you all. This is very important. So the next item is business carried forward, and City Administrator Betts is going to update us on diversity, equity, inclusion bias endeavors.
Thank you, Mayor Stimple. So I wanted to provide an update on steps that Gladstone is taking for understanding and respecting diversity in our workplace and community. Diversity has traditionally been defined by race, class, and gender. Other social characteristics such as sexual identity, physical ability, religion, and age have also been identified as important dimensions of diversity. So the first area of focus is that CIS, which is the city's insurance and risk management providers, have developed a curriculum for bias training for our employees, and it's called Walk a Mile in Their Shoes: Steps for Understanding and Respecting Diversity in Our Workplaces and Communities. I'm very proud that our police chief took the lead on this with CIS. And because of his initiative to develop this curriculum, CIS created a pilot project that both Chief Schmerber and I were invited to participate in last week. It was a three-hour training. The areas that were covered, the first section was on diversity, cultural awareness, and sensitivity. The second section was today's law enforcement, procedural justice, reconciliation, and the president's task force on 21st century policing. The third section was on bias, unconscious and conscious, microaggressions, and equity. And the fourth section was recognizing racial, religious, disability, LGBTQ discrimination. And the fifth section was strategies to overcome bias. This was a phenomenal curriculum. We were very impressed with that. The next step is for them to, CIS, to refine this, and then this is something that is going to be offered to all of the city employees. And then if we're able to tap into our boards, committees, and commissions in the future to provide this training for them, that's the first step. This is not a one-and-done training. This is just the first step on how can our employees be more aware of what they're saying, what they're doing, and how can we be an empathetic government? So we're very pleased with the progress that's being made on the training there. The second area is that we have established a partnership with Clackamas County Inclusion Officer Martine Colbants. The city is looking at how can we leverage the county's resources to focus on diversity, equity, and inclusion. Recognizing that Gladstone doesn't have a lot of resources, we still want to participate, and Clackamas County is aware that we want to be involved. Right now, Clackamas County, in partnership with the community of color, is conducting an environmental scan to better understand and improve equity and inclusion efforts in the county. They sent a survey to the city of Gladstone to fill out by September 14th, and I'd like to know if there's any member of the city council that would like to assist me with filling out that survey.
Jackie, I would like to be a part of that.
Okay, Councilor Neese, is that correct?
Yes.
I will also hope to, if you need some.
Yeah, I would like to also.
Great. I'll send a copy of the survey to you guys to see, and there's five questions that you can help me fill out.
Jackie, go ahead and put me on the list too, Councilor Tracy.
Great, thank you.
Each counselor.
Yep, I will do that. I will get that to you.
I did have a question about it. It was sent specifically for the city elected officials at this time to be working on this? Or, I mean, our council, as it stands right now, we're not very diverse as it is. And so I just want to make sure that in answering these questions, I'm not overstepping any bounds that might, you know, just sort of not not be my place to be answering the questions with this. So is this specifically where we stand right now? Are we at all looking at a DEI advisory committee in our own community that could sort of help guide us in answering these five questions, or would this be first, and then moving on to something like that?
I think this is the first step, is that the county and the community of color want to even understand where cities are with their.
Like right now, okay.
Yes, diversity, equity, inclusion. And then I think the next step out of that is to talk about how can the county help us, and maybe one of the deliverables is eventually to create an ad hoc committee or something like that. But yes, this is, I would fill out the master survey, and you guys could provide me input on on some of the questions. You don't even have to do all of the questions, but I feel like this should be an inclusive process with your feedback as well. But it is to show a snapshot of where we are now.
Councilor Mercero?
Administrator Betts, do you need some more help in the survey, or is too many people too much?
No, I think that it's good that the city council wants to participate in this. Not a problem at all.
I would like to participate too.
Great. And then the last area that I wanted to update you on is that we continue to enhance our partnership with the Gladstone School District. After the listening session, the superintendent, the school board chair, Mayor Stimple, and I met to discuss diversity, equity, inclusion training for management and elected officials. The school board is getting ready to embark on their training again, and they will provide us the information and has extended an invitation to the city to participate. So those are the three areas right now where internally in the organization, our focus is on diversity, equity, and inclusion.
Administrator Betts, Mayor Stimple, I have a question. So you said that the DEI training is going to be offered to our personnel, or are they going to be mandated to take this training?
The training that I talked about at the beginning of my report will be mandated for the employees to take.
Thank you.
Councilor Mercero, do you have any questions?
No, no questions.
Great. Councilor Reisner?
No.
Councilor Todd?
No, I'm just glad that we're moving forward with this, and and thank you, Jackie, for keeping us abreast of these issues and what we're doing. Thank you.
Councilor Neese?
No, I have no questions. I'm just glad that we're moving forward and and really reviewing this and looking at it. And it's great to see the rest of the counselors want to be involved.
Councilor Ripley?
No questions.
All right, I believe that we do have public comment on this item. Tammy?
Yes, we have one. Kelly Chaney?
Sorry about that. I wasn't sure exactly what was what was going to be discussed on this topic, and it was it was good to hear all of these things. I love the initiation by the police department and the training and contacting Clackamas County. My my concerns just go back to things following the listening session before, and just moving forward and making more, maybe making more mistakes than than help. So I mean, for example, the the survey, I don't know what's on it, but if there was a survey sent to my law firm about sexual harassment or, you know, inclusion of the females in the firm, and they they had the male attorney partners complete the survey only, and no women complete the survey or no staff complete the survey, that information isn't going going to probably be accurate or as broad as it needs to be to, you know, say, well, where are we at? Where is the city at? Are the city council members or the city staff the best people or only people that should be answering those questions to get us the best result? Same thing with the meeting that was mentioned, school board and other people about the training. Were there any people of color or indigenous people, or were there any educate, people educated or certified in the area? Like, the city of Beaverton has a huge 28-page plan that they've developed since 2014. And they've they are working with some educators at Portland State University. And that might be a free service, I don't know, but just some people to say, okay, when you do these things, A, B, and C, you have to follow these steps. You have to include these people. You can't just, I mean, like going forward with the listening session without getting any real advice on that. You you can't just move forward on these major things. There's no mission statement from the community. There's no bigger umbrella of the who, what, why, when, how, and then you get down to the nitty gritty. And you do that while you're doing these other things, like the training. I mean, they can be done at the same time. I think that the training sounds great. But also have somebody or someone or an agency or, like I said, a professional monitoring. It can't be like, oh, we checked ourselves out, and we're doing a great job. We picked a good training program, and we are doing all the right things. It's the fox and the hen house type of thing. And it's nothing against this council or any of the decisions. Like I said, you don't go to the top male executives in the corporation and ask them, hey, how are we doing on sex harassment? You can't, those aren't valid results. So I would just caution on that to maybe get a little bit more, and it doesn't have to be a 50-person committee of everyone on the, you know, in the county who wants to join, but somebody or something to do some checks and balances before we move forward and maybe have a, we need a different lens, a lens of color, and not just a white lens to view this stuff. Thank you.
Thank you. And that was it for public comment, Tammy?
Or business carried forward, correct?
Okay. And Jackie Martin, she's the one that's the DEI with Clackamas County, correct? This is her expertise.
Yes, that's correct.
Okay. And I think she was involved with our listening session also.
Yes, yes, she was.
Okay. Anything else from council?
A question. Ms. Betts, when was the county wanting these results back?
They want it on September 14th. And again, this is just an initial survey so that they can tailor what kind of improvements in training do the different cities in the county need. And they're they're going to have a steady design approach on that. So five questions, September 14th is when they would like to have that filled out.
Which is next, which is next Monday?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, so you're going to get those to us like tomorrow?
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you.
Jackie, can I ask you again for clarification? This is also being pushed forward to Clackamas by COC as part of their partnership with them, is it not?
That is correct. It's a partnership between the community of color and Clackamas County.
So I'm assuming what they're looking for is base, and if they're looking for base to Citizen Chaney's point, if they're looking for base, it's going to be perspective, I'm going to guess. And we could talk about that after the fact, and I don't see any reason why any of that information would be held in confidence. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Anything else from council? All right, I don't see anything. So next is business from the audience, and I believe we have one.
We have one, and that is Leslie Myers, and she'll have three minutes.
Hi, I just wanted to say that I was excited to see the items on the agenda and the discussion about follow-up to the listening session we had. I have a couple of questions. One is, is this city thinking about adopting the county's resolution condemning violence and racism directed at people of color? And the other thing is a totally different topic, and that is, how can we follow the COVID count in our city? It's very easy to find information about county-wide COVID cases. But I think the mayor last time said we had, at the time of the last meeting, we had 40 cases of known virus in the community. So those are my two very different questions. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. I will mention the COVID thing as part of my business from the council. All right, so now it's business from the council, so we'll start with Councilor Mercero.
No message from me. Thank you.
All right, Councilor Reisner?
Nothing at this time.
Councilor Tracy?
Forward the proclamation from the county. I would ask the council to read the proclamation and for us to discuss at a later date what the proclamation would mean for the city. what the proclamation would mean for the city. So I, I did do that and I'd hope that we can all read it and then discuss it as time allows in the next month.
Thank you, Council Todd?
I wanted to thank Chief Schmerber and Ralph Mattel and Pat Smith. And finally, they've been working on this for a while. It's a neighbors helping neighbors program. And it's helping, I get some of our neighbors that maybe don't have the, the time, the ability, the, the resources to get compliant with code, when they have overgrown shrubs, you know, excess garbage in their, their yard, their grass is too high, that sort of thing. Having other neighbors that have volunteered their time to go and help do that for them. It's, I think they've been working on it for a while. And of course, with COVID, it had to be sort of shoved back a little bit. But they've been moving really ahead on it. And, and code enforcement stuff is sort of my, my sweet spot. So I just wanted to thank him. I don't know if he's here, but thank you.
All right, Council Neese?
I have nothing at this time.
All right, Council Ripley?
The only thing I have is for us to be mindful of our, our elderly neighbors, their breathing problems, to make sure we're checking in on them with all the smoke in the air. We gotta, we gotta keep all those guys in mind. That's all I got.
All right, so as usual, I'm going to make up for everybody. First is the food pantry. It's, we're still providing food for a large number of individuals and families in our community and also beyond our borders. Food insecurity is a huge concern, as I say every month, and it's only getting worse. I want to thank the senior center staff for partnering with us. And now they're handling all of the, this homebound senior deliveries in conjunction with their food delivery, which is wonderful. And I'd also like to thank the volunteers at the pantry. They're, they're every single day and making sure that nobody goes hungry. And if you know of anybody that needs help or would like to volunteer, please let me know. Next, the Clackamas County Coordinating Committee, which I usually refer to as C4, spent last week's meeting on House Bill 2001 program rules. It's really convoluted and it's going to have a huge impact on our community. Maybe not now, but definitely in the future. This is the bill that requires duplexes in all residential zones. And in some instances, it also requires triplexes, quads, and cottage clusters. The rules are right now in draft form. I'm not sure if they're available publicly or not, but as soon as they are, I'll make sure that we put a link. Please stay up on that one. Parks and Rec Board meeting is not going to be held till next week. Usually it's the day before council, but the way that the calendar fell, it's next week. I had the opportunity to listen on the last couple of library board meetings as well as having conversations with our regional partners. And I'm confident that we're all going to be able to find the perfect path forward because we all have the same goal and vision is two beautiful libraries to serve our communities. So that's, that's where we're all headed. COVID, it's still the number one thing that we all need to be concerned about, even though it keeps getting pushed to the back. I've been dealing with this issue since February. It's not going away. We're not having as many meetings, which I'm thankful for because it was pretty much every single day. But I think as all of us, all of the leaders in our community need to step up and they need to start really pushing this and making sure that people don't become complacent. One more positive and one more death is one, is too many. So we all need to set up, step up and be the examples. So the other thing that I've been asked a lot about is we all, all the council members are liaisons to different committees, boards, and commissions. And really, that's the only way that we find out what's going on because we don't get the Parks and Board minutes. We don't get the Planning Commission minutes. We don't get any of that. So we really need to depend on the liaisons to get the information to and from these different committees. So I usually try and, and I'm Parks and Rec, so I usually try and touch on that. But like Matt, Council Tracy, and Council Neese are business. So I'm just going to ask, is there any issues that you guys hear about or come across that, that we need to address? Maybe not tonight, but make sure that the next meeting, keep your ears open and let us know if there's anything we can help with. Let's see. The Parks and Rec liaison to the senior center is Council Neese. And I know that there's a lot of stuff going on. That whole group is in flux. So if you could reach out to them for next month and let us know what's going on with the senior center. Traffic safety is Council Ripley, and you've been kind of keeping us up on what's going on with them. Library, we're keeping, that's Council Neese and Council Reisner, so we're getting updates. Public Works is myself and Council Tracy. I'm the sewage part of that equation, and we're pretty much done with, with that piece, with the IGA. And I think you're freshwater, Council, Council Tracy, is there anything going on with that?
Well, we just, they changed, they turned over their plan operator. So we have a new plan operator in place and all of it's been fairly quiet since.
Okay, perfect. Planning Commission is Council Mercero. And I know there's some, some stuff going on with that. There was a kind of a controversial parking issue that came before planning last meeting. Anything else that, that you can think of that we need to know about?
I, I think that is the, the parking situation is really the, one of the biggest issues that the Planning Commission is struggling with and how to make that comprehensive throughout the city and not just in a couple of lots. So I believe you're working that.
Okay. Okay, well, anything else, just let us know. And then back to you, Council Mercero. And Council Reisner, you're fire and police. I know they've been busy, incredibly busy the last 24 hours. Anything going on with them, EOC-wise, or what can we do to support them?
So, well, one, I had the opportunity last month to participate with them in some training. And one, they were shocked that a city counselor would, would show up and, and to participate. And they really, I don't want to say begged, but they did ask, I bring back, and I apologize, I should have said this in my remarks, you know, when I had an opportunity a few minutes ago, but they would like city councilors to, to reach out and, and join them in, in some of their, you know, in their training. Unfortunately, because of COVID, we're not able to, to ride with them at this time. But is my understanding, which, which I miss, it's been a while. But I would, would ask or recommend that you reach out to the chief and, and through him and see about participating in some, in, in training that they do. See what they, you know, what, what they're addressing. And a lot of it is that struck me was diversity and how the, you know, they are being trained to interact with, with the public, with our citizens. And, and then the dedication that they have, not only in their profession, but to keep us safe. And I haven't had an opportunity to do that with the, the fire department, though I've threatened to this last few months. But so I, that's something I would ask that maybe if you get a chance to, to do that.
Great, thank you. Council Mercero, anything?
Yeah, I'd just like to note that Council Reisner helped set up a meeting with the Chief of Police and Mark Neeks and another gentleman this Thursday, I believe, at 11 o'clock. That's going to happen, I believe, at the Civic Center. Am I right on that, Neil?
That's correct. Yeah. Talk, a, a plan is to discuss some pending legislation that will affect us, the police department. And, well, you know, me and the, and looking at dollars and cents. Well, could, you know, could cost us a bunch of money, such as the proposed legislation is, if, if it were to go through, would require all police officers in the state to wear the same uniform, that all police vehicles would have to look the same. And there, they get down to the nitty gritty as to the, the type and size of name tags on the, the uniforms. So it's something that has, you know, a concern of mine being a, a number cruncher and wanting to make sure that, you know, yours and my tax dollars are, are being spent wisely. And I have a concern that this might not be a wise move, but.
Well, definitely keep us posted on what's going on with that.
For sure. So, thank you.
All right, next, Council Tracy, Todd, your school district. Their world is upside down.
Their world's upside down. They generally don't meet during the summer months, but they have been meeting, I think, what, like every day, essentially?
Pretty much.
Yeah, so I will, you know, come back with, I think everything is sort of settling in as much as it's going to for a while. And so at the, our next meeting, I'll make sure that, I'll let you know anything that's come up with that.
Yeah, anything we can do to support them, for sure. So I just want to thank our emergency responders and community members that stepped up and helped with the windstorm last night. I know there was citizens out moving trees and doing all kinds of stuff. I was being contacted constantly by people that were reporting fires and trees and transformers and power lines down. We have an amazing village of people that really want to help each other. And it is so wonderful to actually see that in action. And that's what I've been seeing in the last, you know, almost 24 hours. I'd also like to thank staff again for all the hard work that they've done to keep us in compliance and moving forward through all of this craziness in 2020. Hopefully this year ends soon because it sure has been a long one. That's it. So if somebody could make a motion to adjourn?
I move that we adjourn.
A second.
Motion was made by Council Reisner, seconded by Council Todd. Any further discussion? Tammy, could you do a roll call vote, please?
Council Ripley?
Yeah.
Council Neese?
Yes.
Council Tracy?
Yes.
Council Reisner?
Yes.
Council Todd?
Yes.
Council Mercero?
Yes.
Mayor Stimple?
Yes, meeting is adjourned at 7:53 PM. Thank you.